Please, I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Hudson. For Monday, January 26th order, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Mayor Burchill.
Here.
District One Morissette.
Here.
District Two Yakub Rad.
Here.
District Three McCormick.
Here.
District Four Weber.
Here.
District Five Hoggatt.
Here.
District Six Vanzlo.
Here.
Okay, at this point in our meeting, we would suggest, receive suggestions or comments from anyone in the crowd that would like to speak to the council on any issue that's not on the agenda. If there's anybody here that would like to speak, now is your time. I see we have someone standing. If you give us your name and address.
I'm Ruth Peterson. What is it, 735 11th Street South? I don't even remember my address tonight. I'm with the Hudson Hot Air Fair, and I've come to thank the City Council and the City of Hudson for the support of the 26th Hot Air Fair, the 25th anniversary on February 6th, 7th, and 8th. This year's theme is Field of Flight, EIEIO. It's an agrile tourism theme, so there'll be a lot of flannel and be of overalls this year, and cow costumes that the launch directors do wear. We have many activities planned for the three-day event. Friday night, we have a parade at 7:00, and then we have fireworks after the parade, and that's in downtown Hudson. On Saturday, we have two scheduled balloon flights, weather permitting, at EP Rock School. We also have a 5K run in the morning, and we have many other activities at EP Rock School, such as kids' crafts, a farmer's market, a craft sale, and then we have local groups selling food. And there's so many more things that are going on within, on Saturday, and in the neighborhood and in the city that they're just too numerous to mention. Saturday evening, we have a moon glow or Field of Fire at 6:30 at EP Rock School, a wine tasting at the Hudson House Grand Hotel at 7:30 to 10:00, and bingo, also at the Hudson House. We would like to thank our sponsors, the volunteers, our partners, and the committee members who helped put this organization, who helped put this event together. In closing, I would like to invite the public to come and see what Hudson Hot Air Fair has to offer. Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth. Is there anyone else? Dan?
Yeah.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
My name's Dan Suprinsky. I live on 616 Morewood Drive. Morewood is a street where if you go up Vine, all the way up to Ninth, and then hang a right, and then a left by the old cemetery, it's right there. And I just wanted to start by saying I love this town, and I want to commend all of you for what you've made this town. I've lived here going on nine years now. I have no desire to go anywhere else. It's fantastic. What I love is Second Street, and the restaurants, and the galleries. I love the parks, the festivals. What I love about my location is that I can walk to town. And what I wanted to bring to your attention is just a chronic issue with a number of properties not complying with the municipal code, section 212.9, which has to do with snow removal. I did prepare some slides, and this is not about me trying to find any blame or anything, or to, you know, cause problems, but I just wanted to bring to your attention what's going on and ask for your help in trying to resolve this. So, I wanted to walk through this with you. If you could send those around that way, and start here. Copy. There's not enough. I just wanted to go through this with you together as quickly as I can. I'll keep to the five minutes. The first thing in red, I don't think I need to go, I'll wait till they all go around. This is municipal code 212-9, and it talks about when it snows, property owners are expected to clear the snow within 24 hours, and I'm not hard about this, but somebody should make an attempt to clear it, and if there's ice, they should sprinkle something on it like sand or salt. And it also says that failure to comply means that the town might jump in and clear the area and bill the property owners. So I think you're all familiar with it. I don't want to spend time on it. But Vine Street, which I walk on, that's, it's a main pedestrian route, and it's how we get to downtown, and pedestrian traffic is heavy. I took some pictures here on Saturday, which we'll get into, but I had to wait for people to clear the area as they were passing me by. There are a number of property owners who are either unwilling or unable to shovel the public walk. They're either ignoring the municipal code or unaware of it, and they're showing indifference to the safety of our neighbors. And that's the theme of this, I think, is safety. This issue has been chronic and persisting over several years. I'll go over some documentation I have. We've been writing letters and emails beginning in early 2013, and we didn't just see this and start writing letters. We just endured this for a long period of time, and finally started voicing our complaints. And I think it's a citizen's right to be able to walk to downtown without risking breaking my neck. It is a public safety issue. I went to our website, and so the worst chronicle offenders, there are three consecutive properties right near the intersection of Ninth and Vine. There's three lots in a row, and it's hard to tell the street numbers, but in correspondence with one of the compliance officers, I think they're labeled as 828, 16, and 812, but one of those properties has multiple occupants. I saw a sign that said 804. But that's the location, and I'll tell you why this is especially dangerous. So these owners do not shovel their walks. It's not that sometimes they forget, or sometimes they're late. They do not shovel, period. If you're familiar with this part two, it's a very steep grade, so it's a steep walk. And there's total shade. There's retaining walls on all these properties that are, I measured them, four to five feet tall, and the snow never melts. It's completely shaded between the retaining walls and the slope blocks. I'll show you some photos. At 1:00 PM in the afternoon on a sunny day, it's in complete shade. Now what we have then is we get partial thaws and foot traffic, and then refreezing, and it's turned into ice pack. I walked here tonight. It is ice tonight. It is dangerous tonight. And then, when we have enough snow so that we get the plow putting snow on the bank, you can't, you can't get out. You're stuck. There's a retaining wall one side and a deep snowbank on the other. And further, it's a blind intersection. I'll show you a photo there where, if you wanted to bail out at that point, it's dangerous even across the street. So on current status, I just wanted to cover for you where we're at. I thank again Mr. Mayor for inviting me to speak. I wrote an email, and he was very nice in responding and saying you could bring this up on, you know, the next meeting. Now, on Saturday, so this is two days ago, one of the owners did make an honest attempt to shovel, and that's the westernmost lot, and today, that's pretty much clear. The other two are unchanged. And on Saturday, if you all were out, it was a beautiful day. It was in the 40s, a great day to clear the walks. I'll show you some photos. If you look both to the east and the west of these chronic offenders, it's clear as far as the eye can see. And then I've got some documentation in here. The weather page from Pioneer Press documents the fact that for the last 10 days, we've had 30 to 40 degree weather, and we've only had five inches of snow all January. And so I don't want to dwell on the emails, but this is a little thread, and again, this is where Mr. Mayor invited me to speak with you briefly tonight, so I'm asking that the town enforce the ordinance. The one below that, though, is actually a thank you. So there's another complaint prior to this that I put in January, and the town, I'm pretty sure, took action, because when I looked at the walks, they weren't shoveled, they were plowed. So somebody from the town said, okay, we're just going to take care of this. They plowed it, and I sent a thank you note, because during the New Year's time, my wife and I took several walks, and we loved the fact that we could walk, and I sent a thank you. Beyond that, there's a letter from the City of Hudson. This one is from the late winter of 2013, where, and again, this, we've been enduring this for a long time. We sent the letter, we got a nice response back, and said, hey, can you police this for us? And it's like, you know, really, I'd rather not, but that's what I've been doing. I don't think I should need to do this, so I'm going to show you again some documentation. I've included the weather forecast information that talks about 10 consecutive days of 30s and 40s, and all the snow we've got in the whole month of January has been five inches. Yet these photos, now I'm on these photos, shows you the retaining walls and the snow cover. My wife is in the upper right one that kind of shows you the scale of those retaining walls, and then you can kind of see what it looks like as you're descending that hill down. And then if you turn the other way, you'll see, if you're at that point and you want to bail, it is a dangerous intersection. You can't even be seen at the intersection of Ninth. So you really don't want to be crossed. And this, again, was taken at 1:00 PM. You can see how shaded everything is, and this is after 10 days of warm weather. So again, these people have not shoveled, period. The town hasn't done anything. As we go to the next pictures, this one shows what it's like when you start getting into that three strings of property where the ice begins, and it truly is ice. It's not snow anymore. It's ice, and it's dangerous. This staircase here is just kind of showing that, you know, the property owners who own this, they don't even use this part, so they're probably not even looking at it, but I think they need reminding that it's their responsibility, or I hope the town can jump in. So I took a lot more pictures than this, but I'm just trying to illustrate the fact, this is how it is today. It's dangerous tonight. And this public safety one, I know you all take public safety seriously. Again, we walk about quite a bit. In Prospect Park, I respect and understand this. What we do there is, we know it's impractical to shovel the stairs, so we put up a barrier. We tell people, don't go there. We need barriers like this on the sidewalk that we need to get into town, because it's dangerous. It's icy, it's steep, and nothing's being done. And so, so far, we've not been enforcing this, and I'm really, I'm not going to complain like this any longer. We'll find some other way to, you know, hopefully get this done. But I'm now wondering, too, and I know that if I slip on somebody's property and I get hurt, I think I can sue them, but I'm wondering if we all now in the town don't have at least some liability, at least a moral obligation. If somebody does slip, and that's maybe I should say when they slip and hurt themselves, if we haven't done anything, I think we've fallen short of what we need to do. And so, last slide, and again, I'm trying to keep this brief. I'm just asking, and I'm not asking for resolution tonight, but I really want to lay this at your feet and say, what will the city count? What are you willing to do to address this issue, and what more will it take? And to put it in perspective, and I love the fact that we have flags and lights and plants and stuff downtown. I know it costs tax dollars, and we have wonderful festivals, and we have fireworks. We've got the money to do that, so how can we not have enough money to enforce these codes when scoff laws create a public safety issue? And scoff law is a word I looked up, and that's what it means. It's people who scoff at the law. So it may be that these folks, maybe some of those owners are old and infirm, maybe. And if that's the case, and maybe if they don't have the money, maybe the town just needs to maintain it. I don't know, but all I know is, somebody needs to do something about this. It's really, it's been going on for a long time, and I just ask for your help in just making this a priority.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay, Madam Clerk?
The consent agenda items include to approve the regular meeting minutes of January 12, 2015, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $6,323,706.38. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. Contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and approval by the Police Department, approve the issuance of four regular operator's licenses for the period January 27, 2015, through June 30, 2016. Additional operator license application information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the park board's recommendations for park use or fee changes, the fee schedule is on file in the Clerk's office. To approve temporary Class B beer licenses for February 20, March 13, and March 27, 2015, and temporary Class B wine licenses for March 13 and March 27, 2015, to the Knights of Columbus for the fish fry at St. Patrick's Church. To approve the conditional use permit and master sign plans for a new 300-square-foot freestanding identification and directional sign at the St. Agnes Road main entrance to the Hudson Hospital and Clinic's campus. Replacement of wall signage on the Hudson Hospital and Clinic Building, new wall signage on the Health Partners Medical Office Building, and replacement of the freestanding identification and directional sign near the intersection of St. Agnes Road and Center Drive. To approve the continuation of the conditional use permit for the outdoor auto sales lot at 1,000 O'Keefe Road, Hudson Auto Mart, Chuck Volin, with the following conditions: one sign permitted, not greater than 48 square feet, and more than six feet above ground; wood fence lattice permitted, secured to posts; maintain Wisconsin Department of Transportation vehicle sales license; Hilltop Service Center is to remain cleaned up and maintained. To place on file the Public Utility Commission minutes of January 13, 2015. And that is all.
Is there a motion to approve?
Some will.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yakub Rad?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Vanzlo?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Planning Commission, discussion, possible action on final development plans, not plans, final development plans, according to what the, our agenda says. 721 First Street Lofts with six live work residential units at 721 First Street. Dennis Crowell. Mr. Darnold.
Dennis Crowell has a current residence office just north of the Library Police Station. He's proposing to raise that structure and construct a new structure which will include six live-work units, so basically, it's an office within a living dwelling unit, 12 underground parking stalls, and three to four stalls outside. The architecture proposed would be very similar to the Library Police Station, so it'll complement that architecture. Mr. Crowell is here tonight. The issues that were in regards to the engineering have all been resolved. Planning Commission recommends approval of the final development plans for the 721 First Street Lofts Live-Work Residential Project, with the contingency of the final plans be revised and accepted by the city engineer and water utility prior to review of the common council. That has been done. For approval, and the city engineer will determine the surety amount, that surety amount is $11,600 for restoration of street, curb, gutter, boulevard, and sidewalk restorations. Again, note the revised plans were accepted by the city engineer.
Does anyone have any questions for Dennis?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd just like to say it's really a good-looking building, and appreciate, yeah, what you've done with that.
I've received a lot of nice comments from the public in regards to the project, so...
Got to keep the tree, then, I see. You designed around that pine tree on the...
Well, it was there before me.
It's cool.
It actually happened with some of my neighbors on my way.
Okay. Got it.
So we're going to spend an extra $10,000 probably to save that tree. And I think it should be, you know, that's one of the first trees like that, you don't see it coming up in cities, you don't, that you actually, that you see anymore, because they're harder to grow, they're slow growing, and they're, deer eat the tops off of them when they're small. They're very, they're becoming rare around cities anyhow.
Okay. Anything else? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Discussion, possible action on request of Park Board to reallocate capital project funds from William Spark to Burton Field. Finance Department approved that, subject to bringing the whole project back for cost. So, anybody have any questions? Tom, do you want to come up and talk about it? Does anybody have any questions for Tom on this?
Move for approval based on finance recommendation.
Second.
What we're doing is just approving the transfer of funds, not until we get the project to take a look at. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item six, discussion, possible action on landfill monitoring program. Tom, why don't you come up and talk about that for everybody? Again, so we hear it again.
Yes, thank you. The item before you deals with the discussion and possible action on the landfill testing and monitoring program. The city's landfill was closed in the early 90s.
Why don't you say where it is? It's up in North Hudson, isn't it?
Yeah, just off, just the south side of Cratley.
Just north of the gun club.
Mm-hmm.
So that was a city dump for many years?
Yeah, I'm not sure when. I know it was closed in the 90s. I don't know when it was started.
Yep.
Many years.
Many years. Okay. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's fine. So as part of that process, the city went through an approval process with the DNR to monitor and test the dump. Obviously, the concern is something that was in the dump, either goes through horizontally contaminating groundwater. So since then, the testing's gone relatively well, other than we do have one issue with methane gas. They have installed 10 vapor probes, and nine of them have been, for the most part, reading zero, so they're clear. We do have one vapor probe that's over the limit, and we've had discussions with the DNR, and we met out there with them in December, and they would like, they're looking for the City of Hudson to provide a plan to address that one bad vapor probe. Fourth, the city's consultant has been doing about, I'd say about for the last five or six years, has been the consultant that's been doing the monitoring and sampling on an ongoing basis. So we received a proposal from them to put a plan together to address this vapor probe that is showing the presence of methane gas. They would develop a plan for that probe. They would also do any coordination and correspondence required with the DNR, and perform any necessary field tests to provide documentation for that plan. They would do that work, and as estimated, hourly of $2,100. That's item number one relative to this landfill. And the second item relative to the landfill is, again, the vapor probes have pretty much been cleaned from a standpoint of methane gas, other than one out of the 10. Item number one addresses the bad one out of the 10. Item number two is to basically, because we're not showing any groundwater contamination on the wells, we would like to possibly provide a different plan to the DNR for their review. If we do get a revised plan, we can go forward and have less testing and less expense for the city. The cost for, again, we did get a proposal from Fourth, and that is, what's listed here is a modified plan. Again, it's an hourly estimate at $7,700, and their estimate is a savings of $4,000 a year in less testing if we go forward. And keep in mind, there's about eight more years left of testing on the current plan. So the intent would be get an approved modified plan, less testing, less cost.
So basically, I think we talked about it in finance. It was potential $32,000 to spend 77. We could save 32. Again, there's no guarantee that they're going to accept it, but I think it's worth a try. And then we can also try and make eight years, and then we'd be done with it, you think? I mean, if everything goes okay?
That's my understanding as well, is it's about a 30-year minimum on your original monitoring plan. I believe it was modified once in 96, but there's a minimum of eight years left on that current plan.
Okay.
And again, because the results have been reasonably positive, other than the one vapor probe, there's a feeling that we could get, I don't want to say get by, but we could show them we have good results with less testing and less expense.
Questions? Jim?
What kind of, you say that we'd be developing a mitigation plan? What are the possibilities for mitigation? Is it nothing such that you might have to burn it off, or...
Well, that's one thing. That's not going to be included in this $2,100. I think that kind of be, that's something that would be down the road. What we're hoping is, because the other vapor probes around that have been showing zero gas, so I think the nearest residence, Tom, is, I believe, 1,500 feet, so part of this would be to talk with that homeowner and do maybe a test on his side of the line. All the 10 vapor probes installed to date have been on, obviously, on the city's property, which is the landfill. One of the more, let's say, inexpensive tests would be to test on the property owner's side to see if it's heading towards the residence, and that's what we're going to try to do with this, with this particular one. I think the positive news is that they haven't picked up any groundwater contamination, so obviously, there's something creating an issue at Vapor Pro 5, but in the surrounding groundwater monitoring, nothing seems to be traveling towards the existing wells in the residence.
Okay. Any other questions? We had proposed this coming out of contingency funds, and we're going to check to see how much we've paid.
We're going to see if there's any funds remaining in 2014, and if there are, then we'll transfer them in to cover and put the money back in contingency.
I move for approval based on finance recommendation.
Second. Questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Thank you, Tom. Discussion, possible action requested from D3V ECLL Cheers Pablo for an extension of startup time from February 1st to March 1st. Gentlemen.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
So, yeah, we're just asking for an extension. We believe this project should be done within the next two and a half weeks, but being realistic, just in case something else happened to come up, we have to push it out to March 1st. As of right now, we have all the walls up. Everything's been painted. Flooring's going in this week. Hoping to have our final inspection the second weekend in February, or second week in February.
I move to approve the extension.
Is there a second? Did you second, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Discussion.
Is that enough time?
Yes, this time it will be. I promise.
Remember, we extended it past February 1st, right? Didn't we do that?
Yeah. Some people like to be optimistic.
Okay. Well, they're making progress. I mean, it's going towards what the purpose is, so...
Thank you.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck. Discussion, possible action referring to Planning Commission petition annexation, Craig Lee, 42.24 acres lying between Mayor Road and River View Road in the town of Hudson. Mr. Darnold.
Yeah, the process for petitions for annexation is, the petition comes to the common council. They have the prerogative to either accept the petition for annexation, forward it to the Plant Commission, city staff, city attorney for review, or make a determination as premature to annex a property and send the petition back to the property owner. The property that's being requested for annexation is located south of Mayor Road and west of, excuse me, Carmichael Road, generally west of the former St. Troy Metals Dog Track. It's approximately 42 acres and includes part of the right-of-way from Mayor Road that's currently existing in the town of Troy. Some of the issues that would be reviewed, if you choose to accept the petition tonight and forward it, would be our waste of our treatment plant capacity. Part of the land is in the Seneca Riverway. That modification of that area would have to be made by the Natural Resources Board, not by the City of Hudson, so that's something that could take a while, but it'd be discussed as far as the potential impact on density in the area, potential upgrades to Mayor Road, and then amendment to the city comprehensive plan. So my recommendation is to accept the petition, forward it to the Plant Commission, city staff for review.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Darnold on this?
I'll move to accept the petition for annexation.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? It'll be referred, then, to planning?
Yeah, go to planning. We don't have any agenda for Thursday night, but typically, the first Plan Commission would just be setting the issues, you know, to give the Plan Commission opportunity to hear issues or forward any issues to me that would be part then. Rest of steps of the process, once some of the issues are determined, any cost implications, Kathy and I would prepare a draft annexation agreement that would need to be agreed to between city staff and the developer before it came back to the common council. So basically, they understand any cost implications of annexation. But I would anticipate it'd be mid, late March, early April, probably, for a full report would come back.
Okay. Any questions?
Just a comment, then, to then, the process for actually approving the annexation, if the council decides to, is to adopt an ordinance.
Yeah, it's ordinance adoption, that requires a two-thirds vote, four votes to the common council.
Any other thoughts or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion, impossible action on collective bargaining agreement with the Hudson Police Sergeants Association, I think it was last Monday.
Correct.[1773.36]
We met with the police sergeants, and there was no language changes made. The agreement will be for calendar years 2015 and 16. It's very similar, it's identical to the patrol officers. The officer will receive a 1% increase effective 1/115, a 1% increase effective 7/115, and a 2% effective 2/116. In addition, a shift differential will be put forth in place for those sergeants, similar to the language placed in the patrol officers. My recommendation is to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Police Sergeants Association for 2015 and 2016.
Move for approval.
Second.
Just for a comment, there was a second by Randy. They approved it at the meeting, so we had three of the four, three of the five?
Three of the five.
Three of the five sergeants right there, and they approved it. So if we approve it tonight, then we're done for two years with...
This is probably the earliest...
We've ever had.
I mean, with any of our units that we've been this close to the beginning of the contract, so things went well.
It's a good thing.
And we've got two years that we don't have to negotiate. It'll be a bit easier for budgeting, too.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, discussion possible action on ordinance 1-15, amendment number two to the 2014 appropriation ordinance.
This is the final cleanup of 2014 budget items, with the change that you made last January, February, moving contingency to a different area. Most of the transfers were either done within departments or in and out of contingency. So these are the few, and several of them are increasing the revenue and the expenditure because of receiving grants or the increase, for example, in the room tax. So, pretty minor items, but we're required by law to make this, to do this as the, at the year-end.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second. Roll call? Do we have, yeah, we have to do a roll call on that.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Yaku Brod?
Yes. Move to approve amendment or ordinance number 1-15.
Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion?
There will be a publication then after you approve this, and to notify the public that these changes are made.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I have no, oh, I have one communication, and I think Ruth did a pretty good job, but if everyone could go out and enjoy themselves on February 6th through the 8th, I think the Hot Air Fair is a great event, 26 years now, so go out and enjoy the Hot Air Fair. Common council, anything for future agenda items?
I guess we should encourage people to shovel their sidewalks.
Yes.
Are we going to take that up?
And if there's any issues with sidewalks not being done, they can contact Sergeant Munich down at the Police Department, or they can contact us here, and we'll get the message down to him. Correct, Marty? He's the individual?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Sergeant Munich.
Sergeant Munich is the individual that's doing the enforcement on that. So they can either call the Police Department, or they can call City Hall, and we'll pass the message along. But notify us if you see something, you know, within a couple of days after, so that we're aware of it, so that we can get people out to take care of it.
Is that a public safety or public works issue?
Public safety.
Well, yeah. Public safety. Public Works will do the work.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone, any other council person?
Yeah, actually, I want to say something.
Okay.
I wasn't going to say anything, but it's been bugging me. I received some phone calls over the last couple of weeks regarding the upcoming council elections, and I think the reason why I received them is because I'm not up for reelection. But my fresh, I have a bit of a frustration with the, with the conversations that are being held outside in the city, and whether it's, I mean, everyone has a right to their opinions, but my frustration is that we sit up here as a body of different people, different thoughts, and different ideas, hopefully with no personal agendas. And I think this current council has done an excellent job getting things done without an agenda, personal agenda. To hear that there are individuals out there who feel that in order to get certain things done requires changeover of this council in regards to items that don't involve this council, such as a new school, for example, is very frustrating, because I think it's very short-minded or shortsighted for someone to assume that the only thing we do is determine whether or not there should be a school in the City of Hudson. We work very hard every year to get much more accomplished than that. That is the responsibility of the school board, not the responsibility of the city. And I think there needs to be in a, just, a clear line for residents to understand that things don't fail because of us, things don't get approved because of us. Things have gone to a vote, and that's how it ended up. Now, as far as what we do, I think every one of us works very hard up here to get things done. I think we did a capital budget in almost record time, I feel like. We've, we're getting streets done that haven't been done in years, that have been ignored. We have an excellent Police Department, EMS, and Public Works Department, and excellent city staff. I don't think things can get run without every component, so it's very frustrating to me, and I feel if people decide to run for city council or for school board, I wish they would do it with a proper agenda, and that is to better the community, not to try to make it one side or the other, especially when these are supposed to be nonpartisan offices. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I would like to comment on the Joint Library, that we provide a significant amount of funding to the Joint Library, and I would just like to comment on the fact that that Joint Library finished the year about $70,000 under their budget, and in a positive revenue position, which was the first time since I've been on the library board that's happened. But I believe it shows some very responsible monetary management by the library director and all the people at the Hudson Joint Library. So I just want you to know that they're working as hard as they can with the money we're providing them.
Thank you. Anyone else? City Attorney?
No.